Well, good afternoon and welcome back. In this work session, our very first agenda item is a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on the City Comprehensive Plan Update, Vision Hagerstown 2035.
We requested this joint meeting to provide an opportunity for for an opportunity for discussion between the Planning Commission and the Mayor and Council about the update and for the Planning Commission to be able to have the opportunity for any early feedback the Council has to help them while they finalize the plan. And so, I don't know if we want, does everyone know each other here?
Let's go around the table. Doug?
Doug Wright, Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Emily Kelleher.
Kristin Elscher.
Paul Quarterman.
Jim Cenon.
Dennis Miller.
Ron Thomas.
Judy Taylor.
Lou Maxler.
And not present is Rodney Campbell, also a Planning Commission member. Alright, so I've put together Cliff Notes version of prior PowerPoints you've seen regarding the comp plan update, just to help with the discussion and also to facilitate discussion on one of, a request received from the private sector regarding the medium-range growth boundary. So, as we're all pretty familiar, the purpose of the plan is it's the official statement of the policies of the City of Hagerstown directing the physical, social, and economic development of Hagerstown for the next 20 years. Although, we look at the plan every 10 years, you look out 20 years. Typical topics in plan are land use, transportation, housing in neighborhoods, community facilities, economic development, and water and environmental resources. Vision Hagerstown 2035 is what we're calling this plan and it's the update to the 2008 comprehensive plan. We, and we, in creating the in-house update to this plan, we incorporate, in addition looking at challenges that have risen since 2008 as well as opportunities, we also looked at plans that have been adopted since 2008 and incorporated them into the plan, including the 2012 Sustainable Community Plan, which actually got updated to be the 2017 Sustainable Community Plan, the 2014 Community City Center Plan, the rezonings that we did in 2008 through 2010 to implement the 2008 comprehensive plan, the Small Areas Plan, another update to the comp plan, the MPOs, Long Range Transportation Plan, and that's the Metropolitan Planning Organization for our region, and then the comprehensive rezonings the county did for the urban growth area following our 2008 update. Status of the plan review, the, we put out the draft plan for the required 60-day clearinghouse review, but for the state, county, local jurisdictions to provide input on the plan. That went out June 8th. The Planning Commission held their public meeting on August 30th to gain input. Since the clearinghouse, we received written comments from four state agencies, the Maryland Department of Planning, the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Civil Trust, the Maryland Department of Environment. A request for expansion of the medium-range growth boundary in the Hewitts Crossroad area was also received from Bowman Development, and I'll give you some information on that later. The Planning Commission reviewed Bowman's MRGA request on September 13th and voted to recommend that revision to the plan, and a little further on I have detail for you. The Planning Commission will begin review of the state comments at their next meeting on September 27th. And I just wanted to point out that we also gained additional input from the general community in that in March, we put out a survey on the comprehensive plan on Survey Monkey that asked some strongly agree, strongly disagree, and open-ended questions about the comp plan themes, and over 1,300 citizens responded, which is unprecedented for Hagerstown in terms of public interest in comp plan topics. So, that was great, and the Planning Commission reviewed what we heard from the public. And then, just quickly, the major themes of the plan, future land use, we want to assess the rationality of existing zoning, provide recommendations for comprehensive rezoning, and this plan puts an emphasis on business employment. Growth and annexation, the goal is being to strengthen the city, maximize the efficiency of services, and provide a rational city boundary. Revitalization of the downtown, reinforce the downtown's role as the region's center for government, economic activity, education, and culture, and enlarge tourism activity in the downtown. Neighborhood revitalization, increasing homeownership, protecting from blight, and deconcentrating subsidized housing. Revitalization of vacant and unutilized land in the city, attract new residents and businesses, enhance fiscal foundation of the city, and broaden our economic base. For transportation, alleviate traffic concerns, accommodate future growth, continue alternative or enhance systems for biking, walking, and transit. Parks and Recreation, assess areas underserved by parks to plan for future parks, protect natural buffers, improve public access to Antietam Creek and Marsh Run. Community facilities, maintain and expand public safety services, support civic institutions that add to quality of life, support the expansion of school services, support expansion of high-speed broadband network. And then, Water and Wastewater Plan, for efficient growth of water and wastewater systems, prioritize areas for growth, reduce impervious coverages, and improve stormwater impact on our waterways, and particularly eventually the Chesapeake Bay. And then, the final chapter in the plan is the environmental resources and sustainability, explore practices to protect water and air quality, encourage green infrastructure, implement practices consistent with the sustainable Maryland designation that the city has. There's a few maps that help any discussion you might want to have. There's the future land use map, the goal of this map is to guide comprehensive rezoning that we would do after the plan is adopted. It's, what we've got recommended is consistent with prior comprehensive rezonings, consistent with other plans since 2008, and changes that have occurred to properties over the years, and it's also, again, placing emphasis on business employment. We made some changes to the medium-range growth boundary, and this is the area that the state law requires municipalities to have in their plan, a growth boundary, that is supposed to guide your annexation and service provisions over the life of your plan. What you're seeing on there are the changes that the plan recommends to the existing boundary from the 2008 plan. It's a realignment to include areas around the city where growth is more likely to occur within the next 20 years, such as the Sharpsburg Pike area, remove lands that lack infrastructure and likely to remain agricultural through the next 10 years, and that would be the land that's south of Broadfording and east of the Green Castle Pike, north of US 40. It's heavy farmland up there, and it would take some doing to bring infrastructure, and it doesn't seem like the plan for economic development up there would occur within the life of the plan. The boundary was developed on analysis of the capacity and demand for the new and redevelopment of land, and then project what will occur over the next 20 years in and around the city. The MRGA is smaller than the urban growth area due to its limits on water and wastewater capacity. Oh, and so, you can see, oh dear. We, in order to accommodate the Friendship Technology Park, which we already have a water agreement that says we must serve that area, and to accommodate the growth that's occurring on the Sharpsburg Pike, that's where we have demand, we, you know, it has to balance out because we've got this analysis about the demand for service as well as the capacity, and so, we shrunk it in, in that area I mentioned earlier, over there at Broadfording and Green Castle Pike. It also expanded out to capture the land that the county was planning for the park up there in the Eastern Boulevard Extended Area, in the northeast part of the city. We have, and then I mentioned earlier that we had a request from Bowman Development to consider an expansion of the medium-range growth boundary to incorporate land that they own in the Hewitts Crossroads area on the southwest side of the intersection of 40 and the Green Castle Pike. The boundary currently runs along the Green Castle Pike, northwest direction, north-south direction before it cuts across in the area where we shrunk it down to accommodate the growth in the Sharpsburg Pike. What's proposed by Bowman is 61.72 acres of land. It's, in this area, it would be served by county wastewater. Property has one EDU of water service currently, and there must have been a house on the property at one point. It's zoned highway interchange in the county. Closed development that they plan is for retail, a couple of retail buildings and a flex industrial warehouse office flex kind of space. And then, the anticipated demand for water service is 27 EDUs or 5,400 gallons per day. The Planning Commission considered this at their meeting on the 13th, and they voted to recommend the boundary revision. They've just directed staff to assess the boundary to see where we might need to pull the boundary in further to offset this pushout in the area of the southwest corner of in Hewitts. I don't know if you wanted to take an opportunity to discuss this, to give the Planning Commission some direction, whether you agree with that decision of theirs to expand the boundary?
Yeah, I'm okay with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I have no problem with that.
That's another map, that's the county zoning map with the MRGA line on it, and circled area is the Bowman property. The next map shows the road improvements that are recommended in the comprehensive plan. Many of the improvements are, come from the MPOs, Long Range Transportation Plan, and you can see on the plan, those that are red are the recommended new roads, the orange is reconstructions of existing roads, yellow is just a signalization, traffic control upgrades, and green is recommended widenings. Future park needs, that map there is what's called a park equity analysis. It's a model from the state of Maryland where you consider where are the existing parks, where are the concentrations of low-income populations, and it helps you figure out where do you have gaps in service that you might want to think about in terms of, for future park planning. So, all the blue bubbles are the areas that are served, and the gaps in between are where they're showing that there could be a need for park. The red areas on the map are those areas that they feel are a high-need area, orange is a medium-to-high-need area, and yellow, a low-to-medium-need area. So, some of the high-need areas are in the west end, the downtown, and the northeast kind of downtown area, and then way over on the southeast part of the city in the sort of mountain road area. This map shows the water/wastewater priority areas in the comprehensive plan. The red outline is the county's urban growth area, the blue outline is the medium-range growth boundary without a change for the Bowman proposal, but what was in the plan already. The city is priority number one in green, priority number two is outside the city within the medium-range growth boundary, and then priority number three is the areas outside the medium-range growth boundary in the county's urban growth area. I should say, when we, when it was out for review, we were getting inquiries, other medium-range growth boundary inquiries in the Sharpsburg Pike area, but in each case, that was already in the area proposed for expansion. So, the only area we heard about, or that continued forward for us to hear about, was this Hewitts Crossroad proposal. There were some other proposals that were well beyond the urban growth area that we told them we could not accommodate, but this one was within reach just across the boundary from the medium-range growth area. This map just, or this slide just shows the, it's really tiny, the schedule moving forward that's proposed for the plan about how we had the survey in March, we put it out for public 60-day clearinghouse review in June, Planning Commission had their meeting on August 30th. We actually did not have anyone in attendance at the meeting. And then, on September 19th, we're having this joint meeting, and the Planning Commission will spend the next couple of months going over the state comments and any input we've received from the Mayor and Council today, and then getting ready to finalize the plan to forward it onto the Mayor and Council. You will also have a hearing, and then by recent state law changes, the Mayor and Council process is pretty short, and the action that can be taken by the Mayor and Council is pretty limited. In the past, once the Planning Commission forwarded the comprehensive plan, the Mayor and Council could accept, they could reject, they could make changes to the plan, and that often happened with, there'd be small tweaks that might be made by the Mayor and Council. State law's been changed, so now the Mayor and Council cannot make any changes to the plan. They can accept, reject, or remand it back to the Planning Commission for them to consider changes that you think should be made. And the other issue is if it's not acted on within a certain time period by the Mayor and Council, then it's assumed, adopted, there's ability for one or two extensions of the Mayor and Council's review period, so that's why we've tried to keep you in the loop throughout the development of the plan, so that when it finally gets to you, it's, there shouldn't be any big surprises. So, in the fall, we anticipate is when it'll be coming to you, hopefully, and hopefully to have approval by the end of the year. A lot of people are waiting for that comprehensive rezoning process to occur, as well as this medium-range growth boundary change to accommodate Sharpsburg Pike, as well as this new request for the Hewitts Crossroads area.
That's a significant change, and I want to be sure you all are fully aware of that, that your ability to review this plan has been limited some by this new law. So, we want to be sure that when we bring it back to you, that we've included your all's concerns as best as we can possibly address them. So, that is why we're having this meeting today, so that you can give us that input, so that we don't have a hiccup later on down the road.
And as the Planning Commission continues their review, we'll keep you updated, like what we, what steps we take with these state comments, which are voluminous. We'll work our way through them.
Well, I thank you all for doing what you do. This is, took me a long time to realize what a job this is and how important it is. You know, when you hear a quote, something that uses the word "plan," you don't realize that it's a lot more than a plan. It's set forth what's going to happen, and it's very impressive what you all have done. And I was, just at a forum about a week ago, was about local, state, federal, county, and the individual talking about our county government was mentioning comprehensive plans they have never gotten done on time or close to being done on time, and I was happy to say the opposite is true with our city, and what a wonderful job you all have done. Thank you.
As you point out, this time it was done by staff.
Mm-hmm. And I pointed that out.
I need to highly, highly commend staff and the Planning Commission, because to tackle a update for the comprehensive plan in-house is somewhat unheard of. I mean, it's normally one of those where you go out, you get consultants, and you help, but this has been taken on by this commission and staff, and I had to commend all the work and all the hours that it takes to do this, so, thank you very much.
Yes, Alex Rohrbach, our planner, who has since left the city, was coordinating all of this update and working with the Planning Commission, so we miss him greatly.
I wonder why Alex left?
I didn't want to let him go.
Right before he left, he was really high on the surveys, and so, we did touch on that a little bit, that 1,300 citizens responded. What are, I guess, out of those, this is just highlighted, you know, that they responded, did you see any overwhelming, like, same theme that kept popping up?
Reoccurring theme.
A reoccurring theme, and I guess how is that being addressed within this plan, so we know that we're taking the citizens' comments and putting them forward towards the plan?
There, we, there were no, everyone going down the same path kind of comments. We would hear some that was saying that everything's happening in the downtown is great, and we really love what's happening, and we support further revitalization, and there are other folks expressing deep concern about concentrations of poverty and so forth in the downtown area. And then, a lot of folks happy with the park planning that we do, and other folks, you know, saying, you know, we should not spend money on that, so it was all over the place. But we did create a document that the Planning Commission reviewed, which we can share with the Mayor and Council, that gave a rather in-depth assessment of the themes that we saw.
It basically is, is there something that we'll be able to hang our hat on for choo citizens, hey, look, we heard you, and this is what we're doing to address your concerns? I guess that's what I'm getting at, if we have something like that, is that what you're alluding to, is what that fact sheet is that you're talking about?
Yeah, we, there was a lot of, you know, you know, we, just the, you push the button. I strongly agree, I kind of agree, I don't agree at all, but then we also had a lot of folks who wrote in comments, and we looked at all those as well. And that, actually, that's what we looked at the most. You know, the rest of it was, yeah, there's, you know, 60% agree and 30 don't, or 70%...
Yeah, I'm sure there's going to be a lot that's all over the place.
But there was a lot of very specific input that we looked at closely and tried to group into common themes.
Of course, those who are responding did not see the complete comprehensive plan at that point. They saw just the brief, open comments in each section. So, it's, you know, they were responding to that as well as their own base of observation.
Yeah, there were five surveys. The one that was most frequently responded to was the downtown survey.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice if we could, we could highlight that somehow, because great response, as you said yourself, 1,300 people responding is a huge turnout. It'd just be great to be able to highlight that, acknowledge that, you know, that input is being, being taken.
Yeah, we imagine, and I think that already, there's something from those comments in the appendix, but we'll make sure.
Any other questions or comments from the Planning Commission, anything from the Planning Commission from the Mayor and Council?
Kathy, you mentioned something about the comprehensive zoning.
Mm-hmm.
That's coming off, I guess, was that to relook at the actual different zoning?
Right. If you don't do comprehensive zoning, the only way you can rezone in Maryland is that you have to, the person who wants to rezone their land has to show there's been a change in the character of their neighborhood since the last rezoning, which in this case is 2010, or the city made a mistake when they did the rezoning. The easier way to do rezoning is if you do a comprehensive zoning, which is to implement your comp plan. You don't have to do change or mistake stuff. And so, there's a number of properties that are proposed for changes that we would then, the next step after comp plan adoption, is going through the public process to update the zoning map.
So, that'll be specific to those particular properties, if it don't matter, or that'd be, or be an overview of all the zoning throughout town?
To all the ones that are recommended for change inside the city, because it also recommends future land use destinations outside the city where we might annex.
We had a perfect example of that just a couple weeks ago with the rezoning of the property on Wilson Boulevard. Where, because we, we did that during the comprehensive rezoning.
They wouldn't have had to do that, change or mistake.
Yeah. Is the same law for the comprehensive rezoning as the comprehensive plan, that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and we either accept it, reject it, or send it back? Okay, this one is up to us.
Right.
That's what I figured of that.
Somebody somewhere upset.
I like it the other way.
Yeah, the comprehensive rezoning is, by state law, is supposed to implement the plan.
Is, I guess, I guess my, well, I mean, concern's not the right word, but, and maybe we'll get there once we get to that point of the zoning, is, you know, as you touched on one of the themes, is, you know, with the deconcentration of subsidized housing, and obviously, that's a big thing. We've been hearing a lot of this in McLeary Hill, and how, when I was annexed 10 years ago, it was zoned the way it was, it was never, the intent wasn't what is ending up there now. Basically, we can look at ways to address those concerns, so we don't have a, basically a repeat, so, you know, per se. And I don't know where that process or how that process works, that's what I was asking about the, about the rezoning, because...
Yeah. In that case, there may be disagreements on whether the size is too much, but it was deconcentrating away from where we already have subsidized housing concentrated. So, in that sense, it would support the plan. Whether you think that's now created a new concentration, that's, that's another issue.
Right. I guess, I guess what we're getting at is what we've seen unfortunately a lot lately of our developments of that nature, I mean, is, is McLeary Hill's the first major subdivision in 10 years of the city, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
And, you know, we had, just earlier with this body, the revitalization of Health of Gardens. There's also the discussion with Court Park. Basically, looking at ways of, you know, we want to grow, but we want to plan appropriately so we're not growing in the wrong direction. You know, I mean, as some of the state comments I was looking through, I mean, our population has only increased about 4,000 people over the last 60 years, and as we're looking to grow, my hopeful is that, again, we're growing, I won't say smart, or maybe that might be the right analogy, because it could be taken any which way, but, again, that we're not, that basically, we have a plan laid out to encourage development unlike some of the developments we're seeing, you know, currently. And how we get there, I don't know, and that's basically what I'm inquiring about, because if we continue to go down the same path, it's...
We have to shrink zoning that allows high-density housing, that's the only way to do it.
Right, and, and, and I'm okay with that, to be honest with you, because the only high-density housing we're getting right now is not, the return that we're getting on that investment is not a positive return. So, I guess that's my question, is when, when is that discussion? Which it sounds to me, correct me if I'm wrong, is when we, the comprehensive zoning, is that correct?
Not really, because the comprehensive rezoning doesn't address income level. Where you might get into it is like a zoning textbook that says...
Well, I think more like Lou said, not even so it's income level, because I'm not saying we need to target subsidized housing, I don't want that to be misconstrued, whatever, but that's all that we're seeing. And as Lou just said, if it's high-density, then so be it, you know, because, I mean, Court Park is not subsidized housing, it's high-density, and we have a lot of issues back there. You know, so I don't, I'm not saying it's subsidized or not subsidized.
I think what Paul needs you to say is the zoning map showing where our high-density zoning is, and look at it.
And what opportunity or capability we have to change that, if we feel it's necessary.
And depending where it is, it may be capable or not, because it may not be suitable for anything else, because one person, you always have to deal with is property owners. And that's when the comprehensive rezoning, my experience is that's what we are dealing with, is property owners. There are property owners that either like the idea of the zoning change we're making or really don't like the idea because they say it cuts into their property values. But I think that's what you need to look at, is where you can find that high-density zoning that would be compatible with some other type of zoning there. And I think it's fine to look at.
Some towns, they have ordinances, usually they're looking at it from the other direction where they feel like they're not getting enough affordable housing, and so, they create zoning laws that say if you have a new subdivision, some percentage of it has to be set aside for low income.
We don't have that issue.
No.
What I learned at MML...
You could probably trade some.
Is that government, government in our area subsidize low-income people and, and places like Montgomery County, government subsidizes the landowners because they put rent restrictions on, otherwise nobody would be able to live there. But there seems to be some sort of government subsidy, whether you're subsidizing the person who's paying their rent, or you're subsidizing the person who's receiving their rent to make it equitable for them to be there. So, yeah, we, as I said when I went to MML, I think the lady from Greenboke said, yeah, there's some sort of vouchers people have somewhere in the state. I don't know what they call them. They didn't even know what section eight was. I mean, they literally...
Well, that's, goes back to, so we gotta figure out some sort of mechanism.
But they are subsidizing.
Right.
They are still subsidizing affordable housing in the exact opposite way. Instead of giving a voucher to the tenant, they're giving the equivalent voucher to the landlord, because they're putting rent restrictions on how much they can charge. But I have no problem with it, as Paul, it's something to look into.
Maybe we'll get a presentation on that from...
Just the zoning aspect?
Yeah, yes, the zoning aspect. And make it look at as an overall picture. Anything else for Doug, anything?
That's because they, you do have the map in here that does very, gotta get the magnifying glass out. There is a map in here that shows roughly...
We can look all the zoning maps we want, but the zoning maps are colors on a piece of paper, that tell us nothing of exactly the dynamic in which we are struggling, frankly, to, to maintain and grow our budget stability. So, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's this municipality or, you know, any municipality, you know, at least that I've worked with, you know, around the state or even, you know, in other states, you have a body who deals largely with land use issues and a body who deals largely with finance issues. And, and so, I think that beyond a simple discussion on zoning and how, how much of whatever can be put on whatever property, I think that we have to have some discussion with how what's being put on any particular piece of property affects that budget stability over the long term. And, and, and I don't mean to point out McLeary Hill as, as, you know, you know, a poster child, so to speak, of that issue, but just as an example, when, when, that property, just that property, that raw property was annexed into the city, you know, a decade ago, the emphasis was it would have, you know, somewhere around 200 units, it would be market rate, and so, your average market rate unit pays about $800 a year in city taxes. That's, you know, your townhouse or something out, you know, along collegiate acre style, just use that example. And you multiply that by the number of units, obviously, and so, the city looks at that and says, hey, you know, we get this annexation, it's good for the growth of the city, it's good for our utilities, and tax-wise, you know, we're getting roughly, you know, 600 to 800 bucks a unit, and so, that 600 to 800 bucks a unit, you know, times, times that 150 units, you know, gives us a healthy amount of money, you know, somewhere between 100 to 200,000 dollars a year, or, or, you know, a little over two-thirds of a penny. The converse of that is it develops in the direction that it's currently proceeding, which is, is the McLeary Hill development, and develops in a subsidized fashion, and it equates to about 10 to 13% of what an actual tax bill would be for that particular property, or about 100 to 150 dollars in taxes per property. or about 100 to 150 dollars in taxes per property. And here's the reality. Now you have a property that was estimated to generate somewhere between 100,000 and 200,000 dollars a year in taxes that is going to generate somewhere between 10 and 20,000 dollars a year in taxes. And that 10 to 20,000 dollars a year in taxes doesn't even begin to cover basic services, let alone the public safety oriented services that make up 80 percent of our budget. So we'll lose, we'll lose, in my estimation, conservatively, somewhere between 60 and 150,000 dollars a year in taxes, or about a third to two-thirds of a penny every year in perpetuity on that property. That's what we're going to lose. So that's what I look, that's what I have to look at in that budget and say, you know, "Did this property make me money, so to speak, or did it cost me money, so to speak?" And it's going to cost us money. It's going to cost us about, you know, 150,000 dollars at the end of the day annually. And then I've got to go out and find where I'm going to make up that 150,000 dollar loss among the rest of the property owners in the city to cover that amount. And the basic fact is this, we have about 9,000 rental units in the city. About 5,000 of those are in some form of subsidy. The Housing Authority, I think, owns like 1,300 of them or something. You know, of this would be about, you know, 100 to 200 of them. But every time we add that and add it at that level of density and that type of financial structure, we have to go out and find that loss somewhere else within the tax structure. And so we're having to find that more and more for those developments that occur more and more. And for me, it's pretty simple mathematics. The area of the incorporated municipality of the city clearly has become increasingly dependent on the taxable assessment of those single family homes and largely in the north end of the city to where you're seeing those assessments increase and they're making up that difference. And that's just what's happening. And so as that occurs, then we're seeing the marketability of that drive leave and be replaced by that dynamic of that higher density that we're not getting the appropriate tax revenue from that drives up the cost of service provision that makes our budget unable to be affordable. And that's why I said we could look at zoning all day and talk about, you know, what high density means and what low density means. But really, it's all about what does the tax structure of that development mean? And how are we going to be able to afford the services that that community will command as it applies to the taxes we expect to collect from it?
Which we are supposed to be addressing this year, right?
That's the hope. Yeah, that we'd start taxing rentals more than what is being taxed now because that's a commercial sort of enterprise. So, you know, I'm sure you guys have followed at least to some degree where you may own a house in the city and you're paying 1,100 bucks a year in taxes or 1,200 bucks a year, which is what the average is for a single family home. And a rental that may have six units or eight units is paying that same 1,100 bucks. And so, you know, you're paying the equivalent of what eight units are paying. And in the case of subsidized units, you're paying actually the equivalent of what about, and I know this is an odd number, what about 90 units pay? And that's just how it works.
But how do you, I'm pretty sure everybody understands the problem, but how do you solve the problem when it comes to not-for-profits, like Hagerstown Housing Authority? I mean, can you tax them at the same rate that you're going to tax...
No, not if you've already agreed to those agreements.
You can enter a payment and leave a tax agreement.
That's right.
Right.
Which is exactly, which is exactly the case that occurred in some, the one out across MCKD. Once that reached its life cycle of federal credit, then the city can say, "Okay, it's reached its end of life cycle, federal credit process." It can either sort of re-enroll in those various programs that are offered. It can go to private market and, you know, until the private market approach occurs for each of those, it doesn't become dissolved, it re-ups. And we see that with Washington Gardens and any other number. And so for us, it's in those mechanisms, if we're not going to, if we're not going to assist in encouraging that development to end that process at the end of its life cycle, then you're going to have to find a way, and I said this at the meeting with Cedar Lawn folks, you're going to have to find a way to make sure the entity that manages that manages it in a manner that is as limiting as possible to the draw on those services and the costs associated that it's going to demand. So the better they're managed, the less that cost is and then the less that differential is between, you know, the much smaller amount you're collecting and the cost it takes. So if you're only collecting 15,000, you know, then you've got to hope it's being managed in a way that it doesn't cost 150,000 in services, you know, to tend to it frankly on an annual basis. You know, that it costs 80,000. And then that differential is, you know, as negligible as possible. And we're not, you know, we're not there. We're just not. And that, I think, is the types of conversations we have to have, especially as it applies to the continued approval of higher density development, because that's largely, you know, where you see it. And that's just, that's just a reality. And a good example you can think of is the one right off of Burr Hands, which has been up and then it wasn't and then it came back up and it's still sort of vacant land. But you've got to look at that and you've got to say, "Hey, you know, what is the impact of that development as it applies to that neighborhood? And what is the impact of that development as it applies for the city to be able to sustainably provide services at an equitable amount so it doesn't lose out on the tax revenue return that it's going to gain?" And if we approve development in a manner that does that and our budget keeps suffering because of that very approval. And that is, that I think is the dynamic that we have to consider when we're approving those developments, not whether it simply meets or doesn't meet certain components of, you know, of our development process. Or we've got to pay more, you know, as taxpayers. That's just it. There is no other, you know, magic solution.
Anybody else have anything?
Valerie, you said something about the pilot with Hagerstown Housing. What is the, what is our pilot? It's an umbrella pilot, I'm assuming, for all the problems?
Yes, it is. It's based on the income, revenue that they generate.
I guess I mean the duration. Is it last, or is there an end time or renegotiation?
No.
Is it open or...
There's no end time. It's open.
And so any...
But we are recurrent, staff's currently reviewing it to see how a new development would impact it or could impact it. And make sure that we come back with, back to the Hagerstown Housing Authority and begin those discussions as well as with this body on if there are any changes that we can make to that pilot.
And the Gateway and McLeary Hill, if it happens, will not be owned by the housing authority. They'll be owned by the private developer, so...
Right, but they get the benefit of the pilot.
They will be taxed. The properties will be taxed, but I imagine it's based on the assessment, based on the income.
The pilot though, correct? Don't they get the ride, the housing authority's pilot? So you're telling me they're paying full boat taxes?
They will pay whatever S-Stat assesses them at, I guess, based on the amount of income the property will bring in. But they, Gateway, they pay tax. And I've been told by the developer that this will also be owned by a private developer, not the housing authority. So it will be taxed.
And that's what we have to look into that. Because they wouldn't automatically be tax-free.
That'll...
Tax exempt.
Border 144 are going to be all single family ownership.
Right.
It'll pay full boat.
Right, because that was part of the original annexation, right? Those had to be...
So we're looking into what possibilities are there for us with the, I guess we'll have to have a new pilot.
Pilot or understand, well, we may want to have no pilot, have no pilot and they pay what they have to pay. Correct.
Now, wouldn't that have already been, I would thought, during their funding, that they would have an idea of what their pilot would be?
You would think, wouldn't you?
Well, exactly, that's what I'm asking.
And that's part of their financing plan.
I was told that this would not be a pilot situation, that they will be taxed because it won't be owned by a nonprofit. Housing authority will be owned by the developer partner.
And just managed by a nonprofit, but then after 15 years, they can buy it back for that formula they were talking about.
Mm-hmm.
If we get some clarification on that.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to add.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We had this discussion.
Funded by tax credits, so you need your private sector.
I think a lot of this is outside of our tools.
It is.
It's kind of been hard right there, Doug, sorry.
So we get back to the comprehensive...
Well, Kristen started this conversation.
No, I didn't. I just tried to explain why it's not really outside of our collective realms of review.
But we ask you to make sure you get back with us so we...
Sure.
We have a smoother approval process on your alls, yeah?
That's definitely...
Okay.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, yes.
Continue.
Likewise.
Marty.
Hello.
Thanks, Kat. I was going to talk to you about it.
Yeah, we're going to add approval under that quick claim of unfinished business.
High-density properties. I don't care if it's under unfinished or...
Unfinished.
Hey, man, I was all on that board long ago.
And they should be not introductions approved.
We want to tell you.
Not introductions, those would be approved. Yes. All of those would be, yeah.
All these are approvals?
Yeah. Yeah, because I cut and paste and didn't change it.
All right.
Heads up on that, okay.
Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda is preliminary agenda review. So next week, we have the invocation by Councilmember Emily Keller, pleasure to flag announcements. Meeting schedules in October are October 3rd, 10th, and 17th, or work sessions at 4:00 PM. And 24th is a regular session at 7:00 PM. We'll ask some guests. One will be Aaron Brooks, world champion. And citizen comments, city administrator's comments, mayor council comments. We'll adopt the minutes of August 8, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. Under consent agenda, if you have any questions or comments, stop me. Under the fire department, rescue lifting equipment for aerial ladder truck. Excuse me. Fire and rescue products, Harrisburg, PA for $23,737. And hydraulic equipment for aerial ladder truck, municipal emergency services incorporated land in Maryland for $49,900. Under the police department, monthly delinquents, citation collections, July 2017 to June 2018, Brookford, Hanover, Maryland for $60,000. Five 2018 Ford interceptor SUVs, Keystone Ford.
What was the allocation of funding for this, for the vehicles?
The state reserve fund?
Was the reserve capital fund brought in?
Yeah, hang on a second. We'll come to five.
General fund bounds reserves, yeah.
All right, under utilities, water monitoring lids, HD Supply Water Works, Martinsburg, West Virginia, $19,388.40. Swissberg Tank Rehab, Mid Atlantic Storage Systems Incorporated, Washington, Connecticut, Washington CTHS.
How do they line these tanks with glass? I was very curious. It's a 436 gallon tank, glass lined.
Yeah, the panels, the steel panels on the inside actually have a glass coating on them. And this tank has been in service nearly 30 years and we've not had to do any maintenance to it. So from a life cycle cost, in comparison, we're going to spend about $40,000 on this tank in the 30-year period and we're spending 150,000 to 200,000 to rehab just the steel tank. So it's been a great investment.
Yeah, right there, I thought.
It'll be interesting because when they do this work, they'll actually pop one of the panels out because it's all bolted together. And so we'll be able to literally take a piece of equipment in the tank to allow them to get to the top to do the rehab. It'll be an interesting project.
And which tank is this?
This is a tank out at the Brickner Plant, this Missport tank.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, that was for $38,279. And wastewater, John Dare Sea Track mower, Smith implements incorporated, Hagerstown, Maryland, $8,511.58. Wastewater is a UV motor actuator, Tri-State Technical Sales Corporation, Malvern, PA for $21,146.25. Questions on those? Okay, under unfinished business, we'll have the approval of an ordinance, land management code amendment for auto repair. And I know it says introduction, but it's not. It's approval of an ordinance, land management code amendment, abandonment of simplified plaques. And we'll add one under C, approval of an ordinance, quick claim and rescue mission. Under new business, approval of a memorandum of agreement with Maryland Historical Trust for property demolitions. Approval of required match for Maryland Community Legacy Grant for City Hagerstown repayment programs. Approval of noise ordinance exemption, High Rock Crumpies Donut Drop, December 31st. Approval of a JAG grant, approval of contract, EWI Project, EMH Environmental, Glenwood, Maryland, Approval of contract tank mixing project, Carl Belt Incorporated, Maryland, Cumberland, Maryland, $409,000. And approval of trash recycling collection services contract, which we're talking about tonight. Any questions, we'll need consent agenda. All right, moving on, policy on dogs in parks.
Good afternoon. Mark and I would like to give you a little pre-funders standing of our, of our ordinances that we have in place for dogs in the parks. And then I know you have specific questions and we'll get into that here pretty quickly. So just the background, and this is all in our memo. In October 2013, the county passed an animal control ordinance that, among other things, changed that dogs were required to be on a leash. The city has an ordinance, Section 87, that basically adopts the county's animal control ordinance and all the amendments that come with that. So based on that, the city, over the last, I think, 10 years, has probably been allowing dogs in the parks with some conditions and restrictions. Some of the restrictions are, in two of our parks, there is designated areas where dogs are supposed to be and where they're not. So they're on the map that's in your packet or also up here on the T B. Fairgrounds Park, they're restricted to not be where the softball fields are or the soccer fields or the BMX track. And in City Park, they're generally restricted where the museum is, where the band show is, where all the play equipment is, and...
The areas outside the park, basically.
Right.
Along the perimeter.
The animal control ordinance puts the responsibility of the dog on the owner. So that person is legally responsible. They have to have control of their dog at all times, it has to be on a leash. There's other things I mentioned here in the memo that they have to clean up after their dog. If their dog is dangerous or has a proven behavior of being dangerous, it's not allowed in the parks. And no person's allowed to have more than two dogs with them at any given... And no person's allowed to have more than two dogs with them at any given time.
What deems him dangerous?
I think there's a definition.
Yeah, there's a definition.
There's a definition, but who makes that determination?
It would have to be the SPCA.
Yeah.
Right, but they make the determination for 30 days. In other words, if you have a dog, and it goes out, and for whatever reason, there's an occurrence with the dog, and the SPCA makes a formal determination that the dog is deemed dangerous. That determination applies to that dog for 30 days. And if Fido apparently doesn't do anything for 30 days, then he's no longer dangerous. And there's no, and...
Do we make them wear like a special tag or something that says?
After that 30 days, there's no record of Fido ever being dangerous. So that's my curiosity, is who determines that?
I think what's more important is how do you know that?
What do you mean?
I mean, how does anybody, how would Mark know walking through City Park if a dog is dangerous?
We can't police that, but if the person, they know that their animal's dangerous, so if they are where they shouldn't be, or that's going to be on them if there's a problem.
And all I'm saying is, is I don't want to put, I don't want to put anything in our policy that relies on the operation of another entity to determine that policy, because...
It already is. Our policy is the horse and cow.
But that's what I'm saying, as long as it just defers to that, that that isn't written anywhere in ours. That all we do is we defer to those entities as our enforcement entity, as it applies to those rules.
Ours does say that dogs that are determined to be dangerous.
That's ours. And what I'm saying is, when we say that, then we should have an understanding and the ability to defend and define when an occurrence of that arises. And if that entity in which we depend on to do that, you know, doesn't discern and define that to the degree that we feel is to the level adequate, you know, for defense, then we're sort of setting ourselves up for, you know, that liability. Because they'll say, you know, somebody gets a bit, say, hey, well, you know, this is in your policy, you should have made it a combination. You say, well, we depend on SPCA to do that, and SPCA says, look, after 30 days, you know, we don't...
Isn't our policy just the adoption of the county's policy?
Pretty much, there is a little bit of language in there. And if we want to change anything in our ordinance, maybe this would be the time. But, because our ordinance was written 16 years ago.
Right.
And maybe that issue that Councilman Al Sharpe brings up and some others, we may want to clean up. Have you ever been notified by the SPCA, a dangerous animal? I don't recall us ever being told.
I know you should call, you should, that whole thing for me is a much bigger issue. And I had gotten an earful of it for about an hour last week, from somebody who just came into this situation. And the SPCA is basically, you know, I would say not taking the action to which, you know, the average person would have believed the action to be taken.
Right.
You know, and they were explaining to me how the state of Maryland has like a one bite rule, you know, sort of like a, you know, if you bite once, you know, after 30 days, it's a... Yeah, yeah. And so I don't, I mean, I don't know. Like you said, you ought to wear something. And especially if we're gonna allow, because if I understand this map correctly, for City Park. So is the red where they can't go?
No, where they can go.
Where they can go.
Right, and that looks like it's outside of what we were considering.
Outside the common area.
Yeah.
All that red in the north is up by the mansion house, right?
If you come down along, whatever, Virginia Avenue, you're saying you can be down on that trail right next to the...
So that you could walk, kind of, you know, get a route the whole way around?
I know, but here's what people do, the reality.
Yeah.
Is no one ever cuts back up on the sidewalk when they get to the end there, because it's a steep climb. They cut right across the bridge. I mean, that's what happens. I don't know what the word is, operationally, you know, traditionally, is they cut across because there's nothing, you know, to sort of stop them at that point. And it's the easiest trajectory in which that path takes you. And when you're down along that walk, and I've seen it more times than I can count, because I'm up top walking by, and, you know, there'll be three dogs walking by with their owner. And that's where all sort of the geese and fowl hang out. Right to bottom of the picture, right along the lake.
Yeah, but you gotta cross the bridge and go over to the park.
Now. Or where they're parked over here, and then they come in, and you have to be walking down along this trail, right? When you get, when you get down to this point, you can either go, you can either go up to the sidewalk, which is a steep grave.
Right.
Or you walk straight across the little...
Right.
Or you walk straight across the little footbridge there. And everybody walks straight across the little footbridge, and then they find themselves down into here. That's what everybody does. And the dogs go nuts with the waterfowl, the whole way along here. They're all sort of operating on the same path. I don't know if anybody else has been to the City Park, but that's what you see.
No, I agree.
Over here, they generally stay to the exterior, because it's much more defined. But in here, once some people get around this circle, and that path sort of leads them right in that little archway, they're going right in, and by that time, it's, you know, dogs and birds.
Mm-hmm. And there's a sidewalk.
Right.
And the sidewalk, you know, you can walk.
That's why I stay out on the sidewalk.
And the only thing that's preventing them is that sign on the upper left, is as you cross into an area, into the restricted area.
There's a little sign right near that bridge that says that.
Right. And I think Mark will tell you, that's one of the hardest things we have to enforce.
Right, yeah, that's one of the, one of our attendance problems are, when they tell people that they can't come there, they either argue with them or...
If it were me and I was looking at this map, I'd put a sign right at that black entrance gate. And I would make the dogs walk and stay on the sidewalk.
I agree.
Because there's just too much intermingling with the waterfowl in that location. And people are tugging at the dog, and the waterfowl going crazy, and, well, I just watch it.
To keep them out on Virginia Avenue?
Mm-hmm. Which is the way it used to be.
Yeah.
When we first approved those plans, you had to come up around and stay on that outer edge the whole way up.
That's not a problem.
Well, I think this gentleman here hit the nail on the head, though. You said, what happens when somebody comes in and they cross that point, and they have a dog, and then an argument ensues? I'm assuming correct. So I guess my question is why I brought it up to begin with, is we have all this money invested in the trail, we have all this, you know, attention of bring your families, bring your kids, bring your pets, we got dog stations up and down the trail. It gets to the park, the kids will naturally want to go in and play, then they can. I mean, that is a, that's a total disconnect.
I have no interest in having dogs around that play equipment and stuff, though.
The City Park's a place for kids and families.
For me, it's the waterfowl, because it creates a complete disturbance. No, no, because you can go, no, because you, I'm just saying this bottom side. What I'm saying is, on this side, if you continue the path up around here, you're on a street. The whole way in to here, to this parking lot next to the museum, you're on a street. But on the bottom side, you're not, but there is sidewalk to provide that. And the only reason that it doesn't occur, and people find themselves in the middle of the park where they're not supposed to be, is because...
They're already in it more.
Yeah, nobody's cutting up that hill.
Yeah, I know.
And then coming back down the middle, it just ain't happening. And so I'm just pointing out a particular sort of singular area. I still think you can go around, I don't know, whatever street that is, that goes over to the museum.
Key Street, history. I just think we're sending a, we're sending a complete mixed message. We're inviting people to come to town, utilize something, and go to our park to experience it with their families. But then when we get there, we're telling them to get out.
We're not gonna tell them not to bring the dog into the park where kids aren't, and waterfowl.
Right, but look, I said realistically, what are you gonna do? You're there with your kids and your dog, and the kids go to get...
If I have a dog, if I have a dog, and I've had a dog, I know where my dog's permitted. I mean, we have a dog park.
Well, yeah, but we're inviting people from out of town, they have no idea.
And they're walking along the cultural trail, all of a sudden they come to City Park, and that's a dog.
What are you gonna do? I see that every year with the Blues Fest. Every year at the Sunday of the Blues Fest, there's a dozen to two dozen people that come in, sit on the lawn, and bring their pet.
Right, but after the next inclination.
In front of the band show.
They're gonna want to go on the playset, they want to get to go and play in the park.
Yeah, but as soon as you say you can have dogs in here, you're gonna have 40 dogs in here. And somewhere between 5% and 10% of the people who walk their dogs will not clean up after their dogs. And then I want to...
That's a very low percentage.
Listen, I'm putting the bar so low.
We're gonna have to go to the other five.
I know that, Bob, I know that. I'm making the bar so low, to say, even if it was just that percentage. I mean, you have your kid there, and next thing you know, you're looking at your kid covered in dog doo-doo. Because that's all over the place. Or we're having our people do nothing but spend their days.
Mark, can we run dogs out of the park in there? How many times have we run dogs out of the park?
We tell people every day to where they're allowed to go, where they're not allowed to go. There's always been a rule that you're not allowed to have any dogs in playgrounds and/or pavilions. Simple reasons, because of people eating food, you don't want kids attacked if they're running. And also with the mess, like Mr. Bester said, you know, it's just, there's a lot of different reasons why those areas have always been restricted.
Which is no different than the county, right? Marty's Hook Park, I've...
Yeah, but we don't have a $2 million dollar trail. People will walk right into this park.
But the $2 million dollar trail doesn't have ducks.
Why, I can go Key Street, I can come around, I can go behind.
You go right there, there's nothing preventing you from doing the trail right into the park. That's still available.
We're still ignoring the obvious, so what did you get in the park? We want people to enjoy the park.
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
We want people to enjoy the park.
So retire the dog from the tree outside while the family goes in?
Don't, don't bring your dog with you. Are they...
Or invite the dogs downtown, we got dog stands everywhere. I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
We're not inviting dogs downtown, we have dog stands everywhere, so the people that have dogs can play them off. I mean, it's, that's why we have a dog park.
I think if you walked my dog on a leash through City Park on a busy day with kids playing and food, you would change your mind about dogs being in the park. I love my dog, and she's fairly well behaved, she would lose her mind around all these kids dropping food and playing and screaming and running.
Well, if you're a responsible dog owner, I'm sure it wouldn't put your animal in that situation.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, mine would be fine. Like I said, I'm just pointing out a specific, small area.
Because that brings people into the park, and once you're into the park in that area, I know where you're talking about. You're right, you're not going to walk up to...
All I'm saying is, this strip here, the two walkways force you to come in.
Right.
And all I'm saying is, is that specific area there, you have an alternative to not be forced in. Because when you come down here, I mean, the path just leads right across that bridge.
I don't see the issue.
On this side, it brings you right to them. Yeah, well... Yeah, I do, I mean, I always have, so... You know, I was fine when we originally said, you know what, you can go around the perimeter of Fairgrounds, go around the perimeter of City Park. I, I mean, I was, I was fine with that. And you got this huge area over here, at the creek. Yeah, that... There's walking path, there, you know. I find that to be, I find that to be a lot more conducive, I guess, as an owner of a space to go that isn't as congested or tempting to, you know, to...
I guess, Peter, what I'm asking, is there any thought of a temporary basis to see if it would even work, or you guys are just hell no, no dogs?
I think that's the way it's been going, and I guess in my experience, being able to see the way it's been going, and especially in this little area here, seeing what occurs, you know, more often than I can count, of the, and it isn't really for me, the disruption of dogs at the playgrounds. But as much as it is right in this little strip here, where I see a disruption between the dogs and their reaction to the significant amount of waterfowl that are right here. Like, I guess that's the interaction that I get to see, that I'm like, you know, as a dog, and I'm like, oh, well, if I walk mine down there, yeah, he's gonna want to jump and try and pull off the lesion and attack, you know, of the duck, like the other four dogs I'm watching do right now. And you're on a six-foot path, in a pretty skinny area, and it's either, you know, path, edge of the pond, or lake, or, you know, in the bushes. And so, you know, the person walking by doesn't have that ability to sort of get out of the way of the dog responding to the waterfowl in this area. And you just don't have that level of, I guess, you know, waterfowl and that type of activity over on the stream area at the Hager House. Or even, frankly, up along the top. You just don't have that activity.
So you want to make it so they can't, there should be, it should be signed.
More access, we're looking to restrict.
Right there when you're going in.
Yeah. Right here to the bottom, oh yeah, right here to the bottom, definitely.
Well, that's a backfire.
Or keep the waterfowl away from that area, one of the two.
I mean, in fairness, at tax time, you were trying to cut staff in hours to parks. Now you're trying to create more jobs for them to do, because by allowing dogs, that is going to create more jobs. So just six months ago, you wanted to cut hours.
This person that I had this experience with, they're not coming back here again, I can tell you that right now.
That's fine, and I guarantee...
Lou, you cannot say that, that's fine.
I can say that, Paul, because for every one person that isn't going to come because they can't bring their dog to our park, there are going to be 15 people who won't come with their kids and family to the park because there's dogs there.
You just said, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys just said there's not a single park in Washington County where there's play equipment where you can take a dog. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So they're not coming back due to us...
What other park in this county has a $2 million dollar trail that we built to bring people into that park and supposed to stimulate economic development, encourage people to come to town, encourage their families to come here, their pets? I mean, I'm not gonna argue anymore, it's fine, you guys don't want to do it, that's up to you. I mean, obviously, it's a losing cause here, it's just, you're sending a complete mixed message to the exact people who are trying to...
He weren't gonna come here because they can't bring their dog into the park.
So I mean, would you want...
No, but they're gonna come, and they're gonna experience it, and they're not gonna go back.
So would you want to blanket this whole area in red? In other words, it would just be, you could go wherever?
It's a lot of money worth.
Oh, no, I couldn't do that.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Going by there as often as I go, no way. Not in this park, maybe in some others, but not, not here, not in this, in this, in this particular location.
If that's what you guys want to do, then hey, majority wins, so...
Okay, so you want to restrict them from entering?
We might as well take down the dog waste bins that are lined up on the way to it, though, because that's just a...
Why, you can still go Key Street. You can still go up the backside. Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay, so, is there anything else that we want to look at while we're at this?
So what I'm hearing is we'll restrict the dogs on that side of Virginia Avenue.
So the more access, we're gonna restrict.
On the dangerous dog issue. And then I guess the question is, do we want to change our ordinance at all? It basically hands it over...
I think we need to come back and have a discussion about that.
Well, I mean, as long as there's a leash component, I think that was the big... That was the, that was the big piece, as long as there's, as long as there's a requirement for a leash.
So the incident that happened over at Hager Park, a couple weeks ago, the dog wasn't on a leash.
That's the owner's responsibility?
Oh, yeah, but that's, I never said, you said, in here have free rein, I'm not saying let the dog go up and down, run around like at the fairgrounds, it's not a dog park. But be able to walk in, but again, I digress.
If you don't want to have your dog on a leash, take it to the dog.
Alright, I understand that, that was never, never my suggestion whatsoever.
You can't even have a dog on a leash in Marty's Hook Park. I mean, so I mean, you get outside of the city, and the rules are even more restrictive.
The Rodney Show.
Yeah, lucky you. This is an issue we're just looking for some guidance on. We haven't made any design efforts yet, and we want some guidance from you, and then we'll proceed. Keith Moore is a local engineer with Frederick Seibert down here in Hagerstown, excellent hydraulic engineer. And he's working with me to redesign the lake, or I should say, the pond at Pangborn Park. Pangborn Park's one of our best parks, I think. And we're in a situation where the pond there is also in need of some work like we've done in City Park. So the history of that pond is, it's about an acre, it was probably built in about the 1930s. The last time we can see that we did any work on that facility was around 1990. There is fishing allowed at that facility with very specific regulations, and I put those in the memo. But some of the issues that we're having there, I have a few slides to show on this. But some of the issues that we're having there, I have a few slides to show on this. In the upper left-hand corner is sedimentation. So unlike City Park that, where most of the water that's in the lake comes from springs, in Pangborn Park, the water, as far as we know, is almost completely drawn out of Hamilton Run. The water runs through the pond and then goes back into Hamilton Run. And by drawing the water out of the stream, you're, uh, allowing a lot of sedimentation that's in the stream to get into the pond. So in the upper left-hand corner, this is in the, uh, north end of the park out by Pangborn Boulevard. The water there is literally inches deep, three, four, five inches deep. Um, on the upper right-hand corner, some of the walls are deteriorating. We think they were originally stone walls like we have at City Park, and then around, I think nineteen ninety, they may have capped them with this, uh, concrete or cement, uh, cap. Uh, other issues, lower left-hand corner is Hamilton Run, which is adjacent to this, uh, has some pretty significant bank erosion. And then the pond itself, there was a, what we call scum drain, which basically the prevailing winds take the water, uh, in this case from west to east. And there was drains on that side that allowed the water to overflow. And by doing that, some of the scum that develops in the summertime was taken off the lake. It's not working anymore, it's completely failing. And so for them, that's kind of the situation we have sometimes in the middle of the summer. So we're, I'm hoping that we can put in our CIP in this upcoming year, uh, the opportunity to rebuild the lake. And some of the things that we need to take care of is certainly dredging. We need to rebuild the inlet structure and the outlet structure where the water comes in and out of Hamilton Run. We need to address some of the bank erosion on, on Hamilton Run. Uh, but then I guess one of the things we wanna talk about tonight was the shoreline. Um, I'll hold that for a second. And then the other issue I have that I get complaints about, actually more than you'd think, is if somebody wants to go to the lake and they have a handicapped individual with them or a person that's just, uh, impaired, walking, and they want to, uh, go to the lake, they often park on Pangborn Boulevard right by the lake, but there's no way to get down to the lake. So that can be easily addressed to as part of this project. As far as the shoreline goes, we, um, can rebuild the walls, uh, we can rebuild them with stone like we have at City Park. Although I will say, we all know that that is an expensive system to maintain. We're spending money on those walls every fifteen, twenty years to keep them in good shape. We could do it with concrete, we could put in a concrete wall with form liners and make it look like stone, there's different options like that. Or we could use a natural edge like all the environmental agencies are proposing, which would be something more like this. The difference in cost is probably two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So if we wanna put a hard edge versus this, this is cheaper. It looks nice, but it certainly loses the effect of what we have there now with the lake. But, um, to put the hard edge back comes at a cost.
Can you do summer beach?
You could.
Can we ice skate on it again?
For me?
Can we ice skate on it again?
I think what they did was, if I understand it, is they shut the water off flowing into the, uh, pond from Hamilton Run and allowed that water to freeze, because moving water doesn't freeze. And they shut it off and then that's why they had skating there, so. I think our ice rink steward might have something to say about that, but.
No, they may find it to be a very costly thing, like that.
Yeah, I think it could be done if that's what we want to do.
I've, I've always wanted, I mean.
You never got to do it. I mean, your, your dad and I, we've always wondered what happened to, why it didn't freeze, and finally he gave the answer.
I think they deliberately shut the flow of water off.
Do you have the ability to shut it off now?
Yeah, we could.
I mean, that, that's an active valve, it's not, it's actually just a.
Yeah, it's, it's flashboards, in other words, the water kinda overflows, some boards that are stacked up there. And so if you build that up again, it'll stop the water coming through. That's, that's the current system anyway.
A whole lot of people have a whole lot of good memories of ice skating there in the winter.
I just think we have all these lakes, like City Park with, with the, um, like this weekend when we got to canoe on them and stuff, or if you could ice skate during the winter, it's a revenue stream, but it's also a really cool family feature. We have them, we should use them. It's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I'm, yeah, I'm good with that idea. I'm not good with, with turning that back end and using natural buffer the entire way and.
The entire one?
Yeah, because, you know, I just think of one event like the Ma'hi fishing franchise, I mean, that's, knowing that we've done that in the jurisdiction I'm with, where we took a creek and, and completely renaturalized it, has diminished the ability for individuals to use it, um, and increased our, our, uh, cost association to, to, to maintain it.
You could see a portion of it returning that way there, couldn't you?
I could see a portion of it, maybe along the creek itself.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that would be.
One of the, one of the things we were looking at in concept was having, um, the upper section, you see on the left-hand side, if you look at the, if you look at the pond there, uh, there's, there's a little bit of in this area here. That would function as a sediment for bay, so the sediment we did get from the stream would come into that and settle out prior to entering the rest of the lake. And so that area there would be, um, like a shallow wetlands across there as well, trying to keep the, um, base flow so it can settle out the sediment.
Then the idea is we could muck that area out every five or ten years?
Right, this would be where your maintenance would be, rather than having to do the entire lake.
So you're talking about a wetland in the, in the nature of, 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 like shallow with, 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 uh, um, like cattails and, and.
What we have in City Park, I mean, at, uh, Fairgrounds Park and certain areas and walking trail, it's.
Yeah, it would be a, it would be a naturalized area that would, right, you wouldn't be maintaining it full-time, but cattails.
There'd be open water though, in that for bay, right? And then there'd be a, a bridge across there.
Yeah, this is open water, this is a certain higher area.
Right, that's what he's talking about, it's just that strip.
That'd be water, it would be, it wouldn't be a wetland, it'd be water. It would be water, that wouldn't be a wetland.
And there's also currently a island in the center, um, right now it has the stone wall just like the rest of the pond. Um, the proposal here was to basically leave that wall in place, but fill a shoreline along there and make this more of a natural edge in here.
That for that, to me, it looks like a stormwater management pond.
Right, so.
And, and, you know, just my two cents, we have one, and, 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 I think you've been to Myersville before, we have one right next to our stream in Myersville. And it has about a foot to a foot and a half of water in it. It's supposed to collect this stuff before it gets to the creek, that was part of the park development. And it collects a lot of mosquitoes and trash. And, and, and it's not maintainable, I mean, it's, it's kinda grown up and, 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 and grown over, you're not supposed to really maintain it. And, and it's, it's, it's like swampland with, with, you know, and I'm just, I'm just picturing in my mind, because I've seen this stream and all the development above it, that stream right there overflows, and I've seen it come over that road a couple of times. And then it's gonna settle out that stuff, and all I'm saying is, you're gonna have that washout, you know, once, twice a year. Um, and, and, you know, you're, you're gonna be cleaning up that, that, that mess.
It's kind of the way engineers attempt to put the sedimentation.
Oh yeah, I understand addressing the sediment buildup issue, but you're gonna be maintaining, you know.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to address sediment depo- um, deposition in that pond two different ways. One was just in the diversion from the creek, trying to prevent as much sediment from coming into the pond as it currently does. Um, through the splitter, uh, function up above where, where the intake is. And secondly, having a place that, um, sediment could drop out where it could be accessed for maintenance to clean. That was, that was sort of the original concept here.
I just see mosquitoes, leaves and trash.
Let me ask you this, if, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. If instead you actually made that not like stormwater management, but a separate pond itself, so that you wouldn't have that much water in it, but you'd have that much water in it. So at least that's where your sediment is going, so that every X amount of years that you have to get the sediment out, you're only doing that portion.
That's the idea.
Right.
If it were three, four feet deep and it had a constant sort of fountain.
Right, Kristen's point is if you're gonna make it two, three inches deep, we're gonna have a swamp.
Right, so what's shown there is about five foot deep.
Okay, that's, that's.
Five foot deep at its center, that's right. So it's kind of sloping edges that come back, right?
Yep.
Toward them edges, I'm, if that water's gonna get shallow, it's gonna build up a, a sort of reed and cattail type system, right?
I mean, if you want shallow water, it's out there now.
The leaves are gonna.
The entire, the entire lake is a.
For me, I'd rather dredge the whole lake, uh, just like City Park and not have that.
Right.
And not deal with that headache of, of, uh, what I would call aesthetic devaluation that occurs from that type of.
It, it does take a certain percentage of the overall out of the main lake, so.
That's right. That lake's not real big to begin with.
An acre.
Yep.
That's fine, that's fine.
And again, that's just my two cents from experience.
Well, I know, but I appreciate that experience.
Not anything on your design, it's just my two cents from actually having one.
That's absolutely fine, we haven't started the design yet, so that's why we're here for the input.
This is what we wanna hear, exactly.
Exactly.
If I could get rid of mine, I'd get rid of it tomorrow.
How much are we talking, Ronnie?
Um, well, it depends, if we build, rebuild the wall around the lake, that's, that's probably two hundred and fifty thousand right there. Say we're probably in a half million to a million range. But, so what I'm hearing is hard edge around most of the lake or some natural area. No shallow areas that we'd have.
Right. I mean, I'm just thinking of the force of that water that comes through. In heavy rain events, and I'm sure, I don't know if you guys have driven out there, but I've been out there and it's literally like, somebody's on the upside of that culvert shooting a fire hose through.
The whole thing's just leveled.
Yeah, it absolutely does.
Yeah, I, I even have concern of that thing on the right, you know what I mean, of it getting just inundated and, and washed out the first major event. Whatever the little thing is up there on the right. Uh, the renat- yeah, the renaturalization where it's sort of like a bump out of a, a little, the little pond.
Which one are you talking?
Right here on the, right here on the, the, the southwest corner. Yeah.
Those are, those are drainage pipes coming out, they, it's, it's concepted there, showing like it's water, it's really not, it's, um, only storm flow that would come out that way.
Like a dry culvert system.
Yes, yeah, there's about four pipes that outlet right there. Um, I guess that was just illustrating that that's part of the drainage system there, but, um, and, and if you went out there today, there'd be no water.
So let us do some work and we'll be back with, um, where we're at and keep you posted on this.
Sounds great. It's amazing how many people that don't live in the city use this park. I mean, for me, the times I go out there, it is, you know, inundated with, with, with folks that, that are just looking for field space, especially for young, uh, young children to play area.
Yeah, we've had a very good junior football league out there, having more than, more than one.
And that's why I just think that, that, that making sure that this lake maintains its accessibility, uh, to, to, to the pedestrian public is important. Because I think it's an important component of, of that. I'd be all for ice skating, and I wouldn't ice skate myself, but.
And I would be all for it too. I esprued government for years and could never explain why it didn't freeze anymore. No, not because.
Well, we're rebel down there.
I wouldn't do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, I'm good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, Ronnie, you again.
All right. Right. So we talked about this, uh, contract earlier this year, and we put together a bid package, uh, based on the, on the feedback that you gave me. Uh, tonight I wanna review the bids with you and the add alternate bids and, uh, just kind of, uh, decide where we wanna go from here. So the bids we opened were, a couple weeks ago, we received three bids. The low bidder was from Waste Management, who is our current contractor. So from here on out, where I show you prices and everything, um, those prices are gonna be Waste Management's, um, prices. Cost of services are going up, there's no getting around that. That's not a Hagerstown issue, that's a national issue. If you, I don't know, if you happen to notice, this governing magazine I sent out about two or three months ago has an article in here about recycling and is recycling broken. There's issues in the recycling industry that, uh, we're being affected by. There's four that I could, uh, in the reading that I've done, checking I've done. First off, China's not buying our recyclables like they did six years ago when the contract we currently have is being bid. It's about, they're buying about fifty to sixty percent of what they bought back in those days, so that, that pushes the market prices down. Uh, the paper industry itself, there's been tons of bankruptcies in the paper industry. Um, think about newspaper, newsprint, how much less newspapers being printed, so the demand for that kind of thing has gone down. Uh, what I read is much as fifty-five percent in the last five years. So I guess the Amazon effect of buying everything in a box at your doorstep might swing it back in the other direction, but for right now, what I'm reading is that the paper market's depressed. Oil and gas are cheaper than what they were six years ago when we talked about this, there was a time there where gas was four bucks a gallon. You know, now it's bumped up here lately because of the hurricanes, but it's about half that. So virgin, uh, resin that they use to make plastics is cheaper, so it's, uh, more competition against recycled products. And then finally, just contamination, I think, is another big issue in the industry where people throw garbage in with their recyclables and, uh, that has to be sorted. And there's literally people, uh, at these, uh, facilities called MRFs where they're picking out these items and the machines are separating everything, and there's an expense to that. And, uh, things like plastic bags, you get your groceries in and different things like that. Some people, I think, fill up their garbage can and when it's full, then they just start filling up their recycling, uh, bin with, uh, the same product. And that's, that causes more expense for us to run a recycling program. So those costs are all going up in the recycling industry. In the yard waste, uh, situation, uh, I met with Waste Management last week and basically what they said is we're putting out more yard waste than they expected six years ago when they bid it. So basically, they said, congratulations, you had a good six years, but now we gotta raise our costs because we need to have more staff, uh, involved. We, we have been using more staff and now, um, we need to be compensated for that to be able to pick up the yard waste that's, uh, they, they are putting out. And then the last thing is, they've been, Waste Management's been using, uh, temporary labor, uh, over the last six years, uh, like labor ready. That's the guys that you see hanging on the back of the truck and they're going to go to more hiring their own staff, which I think is a really good thing for us because I think it will improve customer service, uh, in, in that area too, where the men are taking the totes and cans and they'll put them back, uh, where they need to be and, uh, deal with some of those kind of issues. Okay, so I'd like to go over the, the bid, uh, so you can see the prices of all these individual items and then we can talk about them individually, however, or all as one, however you'd like. Basically, on the chart that's in your, um, memo or what's up here on the screen, the top line, I guess I'll just walk. The top line is, um, you asked a question, the current unit cost is fifty-nine twenty-eight and the low bid is sixty-six fifty, so it's gonna go up about seven dollars. Single stream recycling, twenty-six eighty-eight currently to forty-six eighty, uh, for the reasons I gave earlier. Yard waste, seven forty-four to fifteen seventy-two. The community-based rewards program is Recycle Bank, that's the incentive program, uh, the price is the same, three dollars and twenty-four cents. This, these are prices per residential unit annually. So the Recycle Bank program costs every residential unit three bucks a year to run. Maintenance of totes, you know, the totes are now six years old, so there is a slight increase in there, but it's, uh, um, not really significant in the big picture here. It goes from fifty-nine cents to eighty-three cents per unit per year. And then our disposal cost is a bit of good news. Uh, we are paying right now forty-two dollars a ton for Waste Management to haul it to Upton, to their Mountain View landfill. That price is gonna go down to thirty-nine ninety-nine, which means the cost per unit's gonna go down about a dollar and a half. We can thank our friends at the county, I think, for that, because county landfill lowered their rate for us to forty dollars. Uh, Waste Management has their own landfill, so they're not gonna haul it to the landfill, but they kept their price under that, because right now we're paying forty-two. So the sobering news of all this is right now, all these costs add up to a dollar, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents per residential unit per year. And under the low bid, it's a hundred and sixty-two. So it's a thirty-four dollar increase. This is a three-year. This is a three-year contract that has a three-year renewal in it. The good news is that rates won't go up for three years, um, and potentially wouldn't go up for six years. In fact, if the market shifts and we get better recycling, uh, numbers three years from now, we could negotiate with them on some of these prices. And hopefully do better.
Could they also, after those three years, counter negotiation? Would, does that relate to rate increase?
They, um, they certainly could. It's a three-year, three-year contract with a three-year extension that both parties have to accept.
But it's open for nega- negotiation.
And we haven't permanently raised any rates since two thousand and seven, so it's been ten years since we've raised our rates. Let me, oh, then.
So the role issue is the alternatives.
Right. And I just wanna mention quickly, glass. Glass is, uh, a problem in the industry. There's no market for it at all, the recycled glass. It, um, gets into the machines at the MRF where they separate all this stuff, like it's broken, so it tears up their belts. It gets mixed in with the paper and things like that, so it contaminates the paper that's separated. So Waste Management's basically saying, and other people in the industry are basically saying, glass is no longer gonna be recyclable and it'll go in the trash.
I've been doing it right all these years.
The paper's still recyclable, but is it worth anything or is it expensive?
It's still worth something, yes. As is the plastic and of course the aluminum and steel, yeah. All right, I'll go over the, uh, add alternates too and then you can, um, feel free to interrupt me though anytime. So there was four. The first was, uh, collection from the alleys for trash in Zone F in the downtown. The second one was collection of recycling from Zone F, alleys in Zone F. Alternate three was having an annual recycling event and then Annual Four was a dumpster program. Kind of a limited dumpster program. So the one I think you're all interested in obviously is number one, the trash collection from the alleys. So, um, to make this work, uh, Waste Management, uh, has conveyed to me. And by the way, they're here, Wendy, Chris and Robert are all here from Waste Management. They've conveyed to me that they would haul, they would buy three small pickup-sized trucks, two for garbage and one for recycling. And really, the one for garbage two could also be used for recycling if something broke down or something. But basically, they're buying three vehicles. They're very small, they're like, uh, F-one-fifty size type of trucks. To go into the, um, alleys, they, um, the cost for that is fifty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars annually. Or three dollars and fifty-three cents spread over every residential unit in the program. The next low bid, if you look there, was over twice as high from allied waste. So, um, that's the cost, I guess, that we were all trying to get to is how much would this really be to, to do this program? The, the biggest concern, the biggest concern we have with doing this collection from the alleys is this map. This map, um, that Kathy's folks put together for me, is Zone F. So just a little bit of, um, explanation on this. The alleys are in the bright yellow.
The alleys are in the bright yellow, Potomac Street, Washington Street, Franklin Street.
Every one of these symbols, it's a dumpster, they have been taken out of the program and they have private collection, hopefully a dumpster. Um, some of them have garbage rooms or trash rooms in the building where a private hauler goes in the building and actually picks the trash out. Uh, we don't provide that service, so we have allowed a few people to do that, um, such as down here at the Colonial. They have thirty-one units. So those are the people that are out of the program. But the thing I really wanted to point out was the red and the blue are parcels that don't have alley access. So for example, coming in Franklin Street, you're coming in here in the, um, one-hundred block and the zero block. All these parcels that are in blue don't have access to this alley behind them. Or the red parcels don't have access to the alley behind them. So we'd have to direct them to take their material around the block to the alley. Every place where it's blue and red. And it's mostly on the east side of town, as you can see. But that's, that's an issue that we would have to, um, I think code enforcement would really have a, a struggle with that one. That's just my opinion. Um. The other issue is, in the wintertime, we don't plow the alleys. And then just, um, wind and things like that where the totes in the alleys, if they got moved around for whatever reason, they would be an obstruction.
I thought, as part of these deliberations, we were also going to inquire of. Providing uniform trash totes.
Right. And we certainly, and that's actually what I would suggest is another alternative. And.
But it's not in here.
We didn't get a bid from the collectors for that.
Yeah, something over there about estimated cost, I suppose.
Right, it's in the second paragraph under.
Yeah, but it's not in these. It's on the spreadsheet.
So what Waste Management's telling me is if we wanna go to uniform totes in the downtown for trash, there's no additional cost of the collection. We would just have to buy the totes and, uh, that'd be a one-time cost of around fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars. As opposed to an annual cost of fifty-one thousand dollars to pick up from the alleys, which I think there's gonna be some issue.
The, the rewards program. What's the utilization of that?
That's a good question. I got the latest results today from, um, Recycle Bank, the company that does that. They work with Waste Management. They, their data shows that about thirty percent of the city resi- of the residential units in the city. Use the pr- or, or members of the program. Thirty percent are members of the program.
So seventy percent or not?
Seventy percent or not. A thousand, um, they have a thousand logins a month. It's been the average for the last three or four years. So, uh, in a given month, these members log in about a thousand times. And out of that, there's about a hundred times a month where somebody, um, gets a reward or gets their, or redeems their points.
But that could be the same, it's not a hundred different people per se, there's no way to figure that out exactly.
There isn't any way to figure that out, but that just gives you some rough idea, so thirty percent.
You gotta build up a little bit. I mean, you, you cash in.
Oh, yeah, I'm not a cashier.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I'm signed up, but I've never.
Yeah, you and, you and a lot of other people.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think they're gonna be like a million bucks.
Thirty percent of you have signed up.
Uh, I'm, I'm not a fan of thinking that it's a, a program that. If, if the idea behind the program, is it encourages recycling? I don't think it does. I think that, that there's no one who isn't a recycler that's recycling because of the Recycle Bank program. I don't mean to imply that it's not a, a positive thing, but, um, I think it's an expense that we probably don't need. I, I like my fellow council members, signed up and yeah, I have, must have a million points.
Can I cash in before we cancel though?
Yes, absolutely.
I guess the reason I brought that up, and again, losing my airway personally, loses cause you're back to the alley thing. It's a similar offset to what the additional amount would be for the alley collection. Is there any, um, similar request as before in the previous topic? That we could try this, cause it's obviously something totally new, within the contract of probationary six months or a year. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Type of situation.
I think the problem there is they're buying this equipment. We didn't talk about that. I don't know if any of you want to.
Try what?
Try, to, what you're saying is.
Talking about the, the alley collection now.
So, we don't plow the alley in the winter. We don't plow alleys in the winter.
We don't.
So this doesn't work anyway.
Uh, wouldn't, wouldn't it serve to say that?
I mean, I think we'd have to try to do something in the downtown.
With all due respect, we have a hard time putting, making residents put their trash out at the right time. And now we're gonna ask a whole entire couple of blocks of people to walk it around to the other side. I just.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of municipalities that do it, just cause we haven't done it in the past. I don't think it's the reason to say that we shouldn't try to do something different.
Well, I'm all for doing something different, I'm just saying this map, it, that's a, that's a, that's a lot of blue.
On the far east side, maybe you move it in a block, a block west.
There are a lot of parcels that you'd have to look at, that the citizens would have to take their trash around the block.
In snow and rain and.
I'm all for uniform totes.
I'm, I'm.
See, I'm not for that. Cause we're just gonna add, if you're gonna put another bin out there, so instead of seeing the blue bins when you go down the street. You're gonna see blue and brown bins or blue and green bins.
We see green ones and, and, and black ones and all kinds of them without.
That's why I'm a favor, move them around back.
And they're gonna lug them around back with the tops still off. Uh, provided you can get somebody to, to, to take them out versus, you know, a lot of times you'll see the kids sort of run down to the front stoop and. You know, give it a toss out to the curb. Uh, now the expectations, they're gonna run around the block and, and, and set it out back. I, I'm, I'm, I'm.
To me, that's just the dynamic you have living in an urban core.
Yeah.
And again, a lot of cities have trash collection in the alleys and they don't plow the alleys. The trash, the people have to get out in the alley, get them. I lived in one, clear spring, my understanding, their trash goes in the alleys. I'm sure they don't plow their alleys. I mean, I don't think this is unique to Hagerstown. I'm just looking for something to get the trash off the street, which is what this conversation originated at.
So when it snows and they can't pick the trash up there, then what do we do? Would be my question.
We'll still pick it up.
My, my conversation has never been get it off the street. My conversation, from me, just me, has always been. Uniform totes with lids that actually close so that they're not blowing down the street like a wind tunnel, uh, every week.
No, I understand.
Now they're gonna blow down the alley like a wind tunnel.
You really think that's gonna stop because the totes close? You really think that's gonna stop the accumulated trash?
I think that the recycling totes are a huge boon to not having, uh, that level of debris, uh, blow down. I think that the issue with the recycling, and I've said it from day one, how I gave you pictures of it was the recycling totes that are used by commercial. Properties downtown for residential collection purposes, uh, that that's the trash. I think that, that the totes with, with, with lids, just like the recycling totes, uh, especially if they wouldn't be blue. Uh, were, um, would, would change that dynamic, especially on South Potomac Street.
And, and I look at that map and, and you really think that those people on Franklin are gonna take.
Of Locust, the entire five blocks of.
I mean, I would be, I won't use the exact word of my emotion that I would feel. If you're gonna tell me if I lived there that I had to walk my trash about a half a block around to put it there and then come back to pick it up. Especially when you gotta pick it up cause you can't put it on bags. So you're, you're taking a recycle, you're taking at least two things and if you have yard waste, you have three trips.
I, I think this is a great idea in theory, in theory, but looking at the amount of people who do not have alley access, it's not.
We have Locust Street, I, I mean, I grant you that, but if you move one block, I mean, right to the west of Locust, you have, you have the rest of the other four or five blocks. You have, I don't know, I can't count that fast, but maybe fifteen, twenty percent is that, which means you have.
Do we not do it for Locust and Mulberry? Do they set it out on the street?
You know, I was more, just, just so you know, when I, when I brought this up months ago. I was really focused on the main drag of Franklin and Washington.
Right.
Cause that's where most of your traffic travels, people coming through town. You, you know, that's what I was focused, I wasn't focused on Locust and Mulberry and Summit and, and Potomac. I wasn't even focused on Potomac, except for maybe the, you know, the, uh, the unit blocks in each direction, which all have alley access. Uh, you know, I mean, I, I really wasn't, I mean, yeah, I would like to, to be able to say, you know, the two-hundred and three-hundred block. Of, of each fragment would be great to get the trash off. But, I mean, you have some areas there where, where you have accessibility, you can do that. But, you know, again, it was mostly Franklin and Washington. It wasn't so much everything else. And again, that was just for the common person who travels through Hagerstown on a Sunday at five P M. And sees all the trash out on Franklin and Washington, goes, that's, that's when he thinks. That was my thought. And that's twice a week.
Right.
Rodney, on the map board shows obstructions. What does that mean? So there couldn't be pickup in that alley, it would have to go to another alley?
Uh, no. Um, I wanted to highlight for the bidders, when they went out and looked at these alleys. That those are places where it's particularly tight. Maybe a utility pole against, uh, between that and a building, maybe a stone wall on someone's property. They can deal with all of them, but as you can see, there's pinch points.
Okay.
Yeah, because here between Washington and Franklin there on Locust, I, I travel that all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like, I don't, I saw the red ads, I'm like, what was that? Why is that there?
I just wanted them to pay attention to those particular.
But they, but those alleys, even if they have that, would still be able to have.
Yeah, I. Presentation, I probably should take.
With the truck, okay.
Yeah, if it's an F-one-fifty size vehicle, it's definitely doable. And listen, don't get me wrong, I mean, when it snows, will it be pain in the butt? I'm sure they're gonna be four-wheel drive, I just don't think they would be. And, uh, you know, I don't.
But we are gonna plow the alleys or we aren't?
Or not.
Not plow the alleys, sorry.
So we're still not gonna plow the alleys? Wait, are we saying we're not gonna plow the alleys, but you gotta take your trash out in the alley?
Yes.
That's not what we're saying, right?
Do we, do we, do we plow the sidewalk?
No, we make the homeowner or the property owner shove the sidewalk.
Clear out where they put their trash at.
So now they gotta clear out the public property?
Isn't it their property?
Not if it's the alley.
It's the alley, it's not.
Do you ever drive through the alleys when it snows?
I drive through the one behind Bar's place.
I mean, I drive through the alleys all the time when it snows.
Well, I mean, in two thousand, February two thousand and ten, when we got fifty-four inches of snow, you weren't driving through any of these alleys.
Were you picking up trash that night?
I was picking up trash on Rutherford Street either.
Yeah, but no, but, no, 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 hold on. Hold, well, hold on, yes you were.
I'm opposed.
Yes, you were, because many of us put the trash out on top of the foot of snow that's there so they can pick it up. No, when we get to twenty-four to thirty-inch snowfalls, we're putting off trash pickup that day. Maybe we're putting off a day, maybe we're putting it off a week. But you got snow, when we get these thirty-inch snowfalls that are rare, I'll be the first one to say they're rare. But when you get them, if it's not plowed in those alleys, they're gonna sit there for three weeks until it falls out.
Let me ask you a question. You mean to tell me that we can't figure out to be able to tell people in a PSA. That when you're gonna have a big snow and it's your trash night, put your, it's okay this time to put your trash on the street? Because we're gonna pick it up on the street then.
I don't think we should be debating what happens in the thirty-inch snow. I think we should be talking about what happens in the three-inch snow because they happen more often. And are you, you're telling me that th- they're gonna go down an alley that is tight already when there's snow on the ground and hasn't been plowed? And these residents are gonna walk an entire block around to set their trash out in the snow?
Emily, I'm not saying that every resident is gonna be able to do this. All I'm saying is this. If we can't get a portion of the trash off these main thoroughfares, nothing will change. I don't care if you get totes, I don't care if you get totes that close and lock and that don't blow over when the wind blows down and they don't come out. Nothing will change. The trash is still gonna accumulate, you're still gonna get it, nothing will change.
I agree with you, but you just said some resident, not all residents are gonna do it. So how do we determine which residents are and which residents aren't? We can't. So what two streets are we gonna pick out? I mean, we can't.
Do you, do you gotta put it behind your property?
Do I have to?
No, I'm saying if you live on this and you don't have alley access, but you gotta walk around and put it, like, let's say I'm the fourth house in, do I gotta put it behind the fourth house?
Yeah, I would imagine.
So if I go and put it behind the third house, that means code enforcement's gonna have to go out the third time in and remind you and say, hey, look. This isn't, this isn't your, your, your thirty-foot strip.
Can I please pat my head off this?
Why? I'm just asking a question, cause if you think that's not gonna happen, you're out of your mind. If you think Kathy's office isn't gonna get a call from seventeen people. Because little Johnny, um, sat that, well, you know, that, that's further degradation. Uh, uh, that they're not gonna call, you're out of your mind. They're definitely gonna call. And they're gonna call, and they're gonna call. In every one of these blocks.
Well, let me add, okay, let's, let's.
And this, and we can do this for whatever we want, as long as we wanna spend more money to do it, we can accomplish it.
Let's.
More than that, because now you gotta plow. You gotta have to plow. You gotta plow, you gotta plow alleys if you're gonna make people walk.
Oh, where do you think we live? How much snow do we get a year? Not even twenty inches?
I don't know what the average is. Thirty inches maybe, average a year?
I mean, we are overthinking this. I mean, the objective is to get the street.
I agree, we are overthinking it. Uniform totes is not overthinking it. Very simple, straightforward. And it's actually, and it's actually at least four times cheaper than the alley process.
Well, I mean, if you swapped out the community thing, we should already. Well, I mean, if you swapped out the community thing, we should already know seventy percent of the people aren't using, but the trash is pretty much an even swap right there. So, I mean, there's, there's ways to make it work financially and, so, I don't.
I get back to my original point. This is a great idea in theory, but that is a lot of residents who cannot access an alley. And there's no one in this room that convinces me they are going to walk around and take trash around their development, around their street.
We act like people don't do this in other municipalities, like, this isn't like an unheard of concept.
I'd like to know one that does. Can you name one?
Rodney, let me ask me, Rodney. All the trash goes in alleys there, there's row houses from end to end.
In the hundred block of East Franklin Street, where they're blue, right? And, and I'm talking about on the south side. And, and they're orange behind it, what does that mean?
The owner of this house or whatever dwelling that is, does not own this parcel.
And has, has that parcel developed where it's orange?
I think in this particular area, I think there's garages and different things back in here.
It's fenced off.
That's where Mike has, has Mike's, uh, truck and van.
Right. I mean, we could ask these folks, they do this for a living, do you collect in alleys other places?
You do? Well, how do you do that when it snows? I don't understand. Must be impossible.
But do the residents back up to the alley, or are they in a situation like this where they don't own the parcel that connects to the alley? Generally speaking, I mean, my house connects to an alley, so I can walk through my own yard and put my trash out back there. But tha- that's not the circumstance in these houses, which is my problem. I mean, if, if my alley backed up to my property, this is a whole other conversation. But that's not the case in these pictures.
Um, in my experience, they won't bring it directly all the way behind, they'll bring it to the end of the alley, out on the main street.
So like these folks agree?
It'll make it that far. And then the other thing what will happen is cars going through the alley, um, not you, of course, hit the totes all the time, hit the trash. So you've got, you know, depending on how much room you've got back there, so it definitely is a challenge.
And you would expect then, that on trash nights, that at the corner of the alley in the street, there's gonna be a whole bunch of trash there.
Yeah, that would be my experience.
And that would make sense, I mean, I can't imagine people wanna walk it the whole way back around. And then you're also dealing with, um, we're picking up recycling and trash at the same time, the same days, right?
Yeah.
So not only are you bringing your trash totes.
So it's just trash and, uh, Thursday night is trash and recycling. And your place, which didn't have.
So now, instead of having trash the whole way down the street, we just have one big pile of it at the beginning of an alley?
This, in D C, you have the same thing.
These are being consolidated in one area.
Yeah.
In D C, you've got the long row houses and people that have to walk it all the way around, that's the issue. The center person that lives seven houses in, they're, they're the concern and.
So Rodney, let's take that alley again where they don't have access for those parcels that are in, in the middle, and let's just say for the sake of argument, that this six property in does walk their trash out religiously to the, to the middle of the back of this alley, around the block, taking it in the middle of the back of the alley. And I see you got two red dots here cited as, as, as what we'll call tight spots.
Right.
Where does the, the recycling tote and the trash cans, which, anybody that drives through town, downtown twice a week obviously sees that there's eight trash cans, not one. It's, it's about eight, uh, uh, in, in a number of these properties, where do they sit? Because I got an alley that's twelve, twelve feet wide, if I'm lucky, where do they sit? Drive my F one fifty through, right? Where are the actual cans sitting?
I would assume that they would try to sit them right along the edge of the alley.
They can't sit on that private property, where do they sit?
Right. But this is my property, I'm gonna tell you, don't sit your trash on my property, right?
So I guess that's my question is, it's one thing to say I can get a truck down the alley and I'm gonna pick up in that case, in that particular block, I'm, I'm gonna pick up, it looks like roughly about, uh, thirty properties, and of that thirty properties, let's just say it's sixty containers, that's two per, per, per place. Where do those sixty containers sit in that alley?
Like during the week?
No, like, like say, let's say me and you are right here and we, we have to take them around, where do we sit them? Like, when I take my tote around and my trashcan around, where am I gonna sit it for them to come get it?
I mean, ideally, I think it would be behind your, behind your actual property.
They don't have it.
But like she said, it's gonna end up being at the end.
So there'd probably be about thirty on each end, each alley. So, well, I'm just trying to figure out the logistics, Mayor, I mean, I'm, I'm, if we're gonna make this work, let's not figure out how it's gonna work.
I understand, I understand, I understand your argument.
I, so, so let's say it's sitting in the alley, let's say it's sitting in the alley, and I gotta retrieve it and put it back on my property by a certain time. So where do they put it when they're done?
By contract, they have to put it back where they got it.
Okay. Which is back in the public space. We got a twelve foot wide space, gotta put it back in generally a public space, because they got no place on the left or right to put it, so it's, it's on the fringe of that, that space, you know, there's a sidewalk to set it on. What happens, so you go to work and you gotta take your trash out back, you come home from work and now it's, it's, you know.
Can't be at the end of the alley.
Nine hours later, and, you know, fifty cars that went down this alley, but your can and your tote, you know what I mean, week in and week out, and I know just, you know, you know, having a big yard to throw it in, I know that, 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 across the fingers, that, that.
Center alley, that's an example of what we're talking about. Yeah, I mean, i- i- if you look, I, I'm sorry, if you have one senior citizen there, even if you have access, even if you're one of the few people that have access, I know what it is to walk my trash out from the side of my house to the front yard, you're talking about, you're talking about in your best case scenario, requiring people to walk at least a half a block.
So stuck. I looked at the barriers earlier, maybe some of the major thoroughfares where it is possible. Any interest in that or no?
Uh, again.
We're, we're talking about a major thoroughfare, when we're talking about the one hundred and two hundred blocks of Franklin and Washington, where, where I've counted so far, and at least seventy-five properties don't have alley access. I mean, we're talking about two thoroughfares right here.
But from here all the way over, a majority of it does. I mean, yes, I grant you, you take here east, these six or eight blocks, you know, no argument there.
I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm fine with the part where it logistically works. Over here, this, this does not work.
And where you have one or two blocks, I mean, I'm sorry, we gotta do something.
I would only suggest.
You keep doing the same thing over and over, nothing's gonna change.
I would only suggest before we made that decision, we go take physically a look at what it's like.
I would too.
I mean, to just to look at these maps, they don't represent distance or anything, or to see what our citizens, that we're gonna glibly look at maps and say, we wanna trash off the streets, that we're gonna tell you, John Q citizen, you're gonna walk a half a block every time to drop it off, and that may be reasonable, but I'd like to go see it, that's all I'm saying. I wouldn't tell somebody to do that until I was out there and physically looked at the, the locations we were at.
I agree with that.
Not just that, I'd wanna understand volume. In other words, we're thinking in terms of, we're looking at a, a lot on a piece of paper, and we're thinking that guy's got a tote and a trashcan, maybe two trashcans. I'd wanna understand what that volume is.
The reality's gonna be a trash day, you're gonna have sixteen trashcans, or into the alley all over.
Is it sixteen trashcans? Well, that's, that's no better than, I think that's worse than, than, than the uniform totes.
And, and the.
Where's the thing then? If you have, and just to choose this, uh, you can drive by tonight and you can see it, come up Franklin Street, go down Washington Street. There are trashcans that are sitting there because, you know, they, they don't have access to, to put it around back, cause right now they'd have to put it around back and drag it around front. Right? I mean, that, that's what the ordinance says, right? You can't have them sitting there if you have a place that you can put them other than on the front sidewalk, right? And places who, I can tell you right now, you look at these maps and the places that have alley access, those trashcans aren't around back by the alleys, they're out front. And if you drive down Franklin Street, you drive down Washington Street, that's what you see. So you're just reversing the process for them. Now they, now at least, their trashcans won't be sitting out front seven days a week, twenty-four, seven, either with trash in them or without trash in them, they'll be, for, for some of them anyway, will be out back. Where they just drag it down their backyard, put it in the alley, drag it back up to the backyard again. Because they don't have that current access from front to back with a s- a, a split between two houses. That's what you have. So really, I mean, it's, you're gonna flip it. And Lou, I, I understand, but I can tell you right now, I travel those alleys all the time, constantly, and.
So do I, Mayor. So do I, Mayor.
But, you know.
And I'm looking, I'm thinking about this.
That getting trashcans off of the unit block of Franklin Street, okay, where everybody, basically everybody has access to, to the alley, instead of seeing what you see there every single day, yeah, I think that's a plus.
I mean, I need, I need, look, I, I'm, I'm not arguing because I, I'm, I'm not there, I, I need to.
I understand.
To take a look and see, see, because we're talking about, we have two different issues going on. We have the, the good of the community to keep the trash off. And we have the individual rights of what we wanna tell our individual citizens they have to do to meet to the good of the community. And I'm not willing to tell the individual citizen that yet until I go out there and, as I say, even if I have access, I need to see what type of distances we're talking about. And, and yeah, if you're talking about what it looks like when I look on the maps of a half a block, a walk guaranteed, then when you talk about five or six inches of snow, and again, we're all talking about healthy individuals here. I'm, I'm concerned about senior citizens, I'm concerned about elderly people that may not have that, and I don't know, Mayor, I, I wanna see it. I wanna go physically look and see what it would take to walk those totes from where they need to be.
And where they'll be stored.
That makes an assumption, though, that these are single units on single lots with single people. What I'm saying is, you have a number of apartments where largely it is every unit for themselves, and there's some totes that throw things in, and, and, and it's.
That's what the numbers are.
That's right, and the night, what happens is the person that happens to be last to throw it in, that's the person that might take it out to the curb, and all I'm saying is, you know what I mean, it's one thing to sit and look at a lot and say, okay, that one place on that one lot has to do that one thing with it, not, you know, there's eight, you know, units in that one property on that one lot, and somebody's gotta be responsible for that.
I just, uh, listen, I don't, I don't argue that it's, I mean, there's not a perfect solution, and I know that.
We'd be doing it.
Uh, right, right. But, but I know there's gotta be a better way than what we're doing, that's all I'm saying. And I don't know what that way is exactly.
What is the gray? If you're gonna go out and look at this, I wanna understand.
It's the central parking lot.
So, okay, so all of the gray is what? Because it says it's parcels without structures, are these parcels that, cause when, I wanna make sure that when I look at that, you say rental parcels with alley access and you have them in green, that, that what you mean by the gray behind them is that they have.
Usually it's a parking lot.
The free ability to get through.
Uh, not in all cases. In the public parking lot, obviously they would, but some of those are private parking lots.
And that's what I'm saying, so, so all the green aren't really green.
Oh, the green aren't really green.
Well, you, what you're saying is these rental parcels with alley access, but a number of them butt up to gray properties.
Right, green have grays on the back.
But what you're pushing, pointing at though, is the central parking lot.
Okay, well, I mean, there's, there's one, there's.
Yeah, that, that would be one.
There's, there's at least a dozen up there, and so, you know, Lou's gonna go look at it and says, oh, this person's got a, you know, emptiness behind him, up here on, on, on.
What you're saying, like, this parcel right here.
I don't know what that means.
Can't walk through that area there because it's owned by somebody else. It's a parking lot, owned by somebody.
So that's another example of someone who would have to take it around.
That's Antietam Street.
Okay.
I, I'm just, I'm saying, I, I.
Mayor, may I pose a, may I pose a warning?
Please propose something.
We, we agree that we have a new contract, the basic contract, um.
We'll figure out the logistics later.
Well, well, at least, and, and that, that we would agree not to use recycle bank.
I was using it as an offset for the, for the alley thing.
Well, we use it for an offset for anything, I mean, we don't spend the money, it's the money we're not charging our citizens.
Right.
And, and that we collectively, I'm sure these folks will be happy for us to tell them at any time that we want them to ramp up alley activity or, or fine tune this thing. I understand what, what you're saying, and, and I understand what Paul's saying. I don't know if you'll get me there, I, I just don't know, I need to go look, but I certainly see on Potomac, and I see these places where it looks like you could do it, but I don't know.
Let me, let me ask this real quick, and I apologize for interrupting, because I think it's a great idea to look, and I think I'm gonna do the same as well. I wanna ask these folks, I'm assuming you guys have looked at these areas, okay? So as you always say, Lou, and I, and I totally agree, let's ask, ask that, what, what is your feeling? Do you feel that this is, is possible? Or, or is this something that, that will work, or from your experience, is this something that is not feasible?
Um, well, I don't really, I, I've seen it work. Um, and it all depends on what the needs are of the community, obviously, but I've spent a lot of time driving through these alleys the last couple of weeks since this came up. Um, this is very narrow, we do have the equipment that will go through there. Um, my concerns that were just raised were you'd have some people that would be able to put it out, some people wouldn't. From my perspective, I'm thinking, okay, am I doing nineteen hundred now, or am I doing six hundred? So my head's kind of thinking that way. Some do, some don't. Um, some can use bags, some use carts, all those options are available to you.
Partly what, excuse me, partly what you're saying is, uh, if we do all, we should do all of zone F, we should, we can't pick and choose what we want.
Get in the cafeteria, man.
You can, but, but logistically for me, I'm thinking, okay, now am I looking at how many pieces of equipment? Are certain streets gonna be done and certain streets are not gonna be, and that's fine, but I'm looking at your map thinking, okay, looking for the ones that go all the way through that do have access to the map.
Well, but you know what, we could shrink Zone F.
Right.
To a portion, that is, a unit block in each direction from Potomac Street and, you know.
Absolutely.
Right, I mean, where most of the alley access is available.
Right.
And it can, and it's more in accordance with.
And that's why I'm suggesting we go ahead with this contract, given the fact that these folks, at any time we say to them, we wanna go with this alley thing, we fine tune it if we can.
And we haven't bought anything yet, so that's, you know.
A time, I guess, or, or this, or this addendum, it's like you need to know within a certain amount of date.
I'd like for you.
Yeah, example of the equipment.
I'd like for you to award the base contract either this month or next month.
Right.
The add alternates, you can.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a problem with the base contract.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, we do the base, we get rid of recycle bank, and we continue looking and, and see what we can do.
I agree.
I, I have one more question that he just raised. Central lot there, the line goes through central lot, so are we saying that those residents will be setting their trash in central lot?
At the edge, yes.
At the edge of the property.
No, their property's stopped at the gray.
Cause that's where the parking lot begins.
Okay.
So they set their trash at the edge of their property, and it would get picked up there. I mean, it's all parking, it's all open, it's not like it's, you can't get to them.
Well, I think Lou said on some of these situations, it's probably way better to look in person than looking at, looking at math, but I think there's gotta be a way to somehow make, to make it better.
Well, anyway, I mean, I think we're good with, yeah.
Base contract.
Okay, sounds great, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you about everything else, or we won't.
Can I ask about alternates three and four, we didn't talk about?
Oh, yes.
Well, what are they?
Three was electronics recycling event, I, I would highly recommend those, the residents really, they cost a buck a year for a residential unit, and people seem to really get a lot of.
Their use.
That's, yes.
The other one was the dumpster program. And that's probably a whole discussion itself.
I agree, I agree, we can always discuss that, I know things.
We still have curbside large pickup.
Yep, call and get it picked up.
It's like twenty bucks, twenty bucks.
Yeah, and that's the way to do it.
Yeah, that's what I've done, I did years ago, I didn't even store it up.
Yeah, that's the way to do it.
That dumpster program's got a, a ton limit on it, which it does, no way.
So we table.
We have Steph has some other ideas on that though.
Yeah, we do have other ideas worth talking.
So we can add that to a work session, just those two alternates.
Talk about Zone F again and, and open up four.
And then when people don't wanna take it to the dumpster or call and get the, get it picked up by the city, you just throw it out at the overpass and what's in, I mean, you know.
Okay.
Okay. Same industry, thanks from you, thank you, Rodney.
You got it, Rodney? Okay.
Base mid less recycle bank and alternate three, is what you wanna prove, this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can leave that.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just a wonderful event this past weekend, Fall Fest and Porch Fest, so thank everyone who worked so hard to put those two events together, wonderful. That's all.
Past nightmare, we've spoken enough. I've spoken enough.
Paul?
Uh, just one quick thing, follow last week's discussion about a letter of opposition towards the Clear Hair Project, we had a loose discussion about it. Just curious if anyone has any, uh, any thoughts on that, I don't know if there needs to be a motion made for it or whatnot, but I'm in favor of sending the letter. Chris, I know you sent your own, I don't know if you're in favor of sending one to the city or not. Basically, that's what I'm asking. If you're not in favor. Emily?
I thought we were way past the stage of needing a letter of opposition.
No, cause my understanding, there's still, there's multiple phases.
We are way past it, but.
Well, there's still some multiple funding sources that have to come up as far as phase two and three, so I don't think, totally out of it, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with sending my letter in again. I know it's a forty-five day period of comment, you know what I mean?